You had that really big one, Keith, come quick.
Good morning. Welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting for June 16th, and we'll begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. We have time for a public comment. Then we will proceed with the approval of the minutes of our June 2nd meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of same signs, so move. Moving with your treasurer's report.
Good morning. We had receipts on June 14th and 15th of $25,070.69. Our total cash was brought to $3,8235.80. Our expenditures were $1,243,890.98. The tax claim was $15,774.18. So we have a balance of $1,822,570.64.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second. There's a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Most same signs, so move.
Good morning.
She's my moral support. Leanne, you may come up and.
Come on, Leanne. It's been a while since she doesn't have her recon conference seminars anymore.
She thinks she lost her place.
I do.
No.
We're waiting for that, too.
All right. Would you like to introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
Michelle Saly, Director of Human Resources. Leanne Shank, Human Resources Assistant. Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations. Glenn Bressler, caseworker two, children and youth resignation effective June 10th. Raina Underkochler, full-time central booking agent, central booking resignation effective June 24th. Timothy Coynlan, full-time telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services resignation effective July 9th. Lance Mullins, full-time correctional officer at the jail resignation effective June 10th. Matthew Mitchell, full-time correctional officer at the jail, job abandonment effective June 8th. Wilfredo Rohanna, probation officer one, probation services termination effective June 6th. Grace Wolf, probation officer one, probation services resignation effective June 17th. Cheyenne Schaefer, part-time court clerk, clerk of courts termination effective June 6th. Vanessa Sonnen, residential service coordinator, Renova Center resignation effective June 7th. Diana Luciotti, accounting clerk C, treasurer's office resignation effective June 1st. Mitchell Shear, casual part-time maintenance voter registration resignation effective June 30th.
Motion to approve the remuneration.
Second a motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Any question or comment? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of same signs, so move.
Under changes of status transfers and promotions, I have two motions. The first is to approve the issue.
Would you like to come in step? Here, listen. Yeah, yeah, here, just another step. Up in the front row, here.
This is a big, this is a big HR project.
No, wait, no, wait. How did, how did you ladies phrase this? A super dream team?
Dream team.
The dreaming team is here.
There you go.
All right.
That's so noted.
Well, now you're up here. All right. Motion to approve the issuance of retention payments in accordance with the American Rescue Plan Act to current county of Lebanon employees based on hours worked during the 12-week shutdown from March 22, 2020 through June 13, 2020, as well as other COVID matters. Payments shall be issued on a sliding scale from categories as followed. One, $1,000. A, $1,500. B, $2,800. C, $5,500. D, $7,600. And E, $10,400. These payments shall be issued to eligible employees in the following groups: non-union, chocolate workers union, ASME union, detectives association union. Eligible employees must be currently employed as of the effective date and active status and have worked through the 12-week COVID shutdown as outlined above. Payments effective June 22, 2022.
I would gladly make a motion to support our ARPA bonus retention for all of our employees listed and thank this group of illustrious ladies, the dreaming team, for their hard work and pull it together. Thank you.
A second motion. It's been moved in second, and I'll just add that these are the employees during that 12-week period that really stepped up when needed because public safety does not take a vacation. And all the other required departments that we need to keep operating, many of those folks worked in the unknown because this was new to everyone. We didn't know where it was heading, and they answered the call. And so this is, through ARPA, we're able to recognize that. And a lot of hard work went into developing this list. And we're glad we're able to recognize the good work of our employees for this effort.
If I may just speak to ARPA for a moment.
Sure.
Since ARPA eligible expense, ARPA allows for not only the 24/7 public safety, you know, critical services to be eligible for this, but also supporting services. So, you know, that broadens the circle. That's, initially, it was believed that ARPA was going to allow for this for correctional officers, dispatchers, you know, that, that healthcare workers at Renova, that sort of thing. But as the final rule came out, interpreted legislation, in order for those people to be able to do their job, you also need them, the managerial people, you need the payroll people, you need even the building and grounds people, you know, to maintain the facilities that have to stay open and so on. So that very much broadened the circle, and this is not unique. Other counties have done this. And some of the parameters were modeled after what other counties have been doing. And it's, you know, it's really great. One of the things I just might add to the people, Commissioner Phillips, you said the people who kind of stuck through during that period of time and have since, you know, ARPA's aim here was retention.
They didn't jump ship.
And they've stayed. And, you know, this is, this is a recognition of that retention. So that's why there was eligibility criteria.
And they didn't mention the mental health and children that knew them. Or, yeah, that kind of services, you still have to continue, and they were in close contact sometimes. So I bless them all.
Don't mean to miss anybody. It's hard to catch them all, but.
Yeah, just, you know.
Do we know how many people this is going to impact and how much we're looking at?
We're looking, I can tell you the second part of that question, we're looking at as of today's approval. And there still may be some others. One of the bargaining units, we are still in talks with about the parameters and the the side agreement for payment to the members of the union. But all total, as of today, is 2.1 million. And numbers of employees, do you have a count? Do you have numbers by department? Do you have a count of the number of people impacted? No. That's a question we asked ourselves at all. We just went through it, didn't really count that up, Jim, but.
But it's in the people that are in all those categories, Michelle listed, that are also still with.
Yes.
With the county.
I mean, it's in the hundreds, the numbers.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, this is our moment to pause and reflect and thank them and what we recognize. A little bit of a financial reward. All right. Any other questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
To approve administrator of children and youth services Erin Moore's recommendation to temporarily permit non-union children and youth supervisors to assist caseworkers with primary on-call week coverage and receive on-call pay at the rate of $225 per on-call week, seven days. The ability to split the week 50/50, in which case the on-call rate will be split 50/50 as well, effective immediately through December 31, 2022. This would only occur in instances where there are no caseworkers willing to cover the on-call week. All on-call is offered to these workers first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve that children and youth services request. Questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
Kyle Clemmons, change in status, casual part-time correctional officer at the jail to full-time correctional officer, no change in his rate, effective June 27. Kevin Farmer, promotion from Lance Corporal at the jail to Corporal at the jail, $26 per hour, effective June 27. Mary Hay, promotion from Secretary D in the District Attorney's Office to Admin Specialist ARD in the District Attorney's Office, at the rate of $1,255.53 by weekly, effective June 27.
Make a motion to approve those changes of status transfers and promotions.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions, comments, discussion? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Chief Public Defender Brian Dietrich's recommendation to create a temporary Public Defender One apprentice position with this department at a grade 10 on the new non-union salary chart at 40 hours per week, effective June 20.
Approve.
Second.
It's approved in second, and that we approve of Public Defender Brian Dietrich's request. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
Children and youth would like to hire Rihanna Morgan as a caseworker one at a rate of $1,227.25 by weekly, effective June 20. Children and youth would like to hire the following three caseworker ones, all at the rate of $1,227.25 by weekly, all effective June 20. And that is Dante Smith, Catherine Powell, and Madison Gaper. Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Tyler Greif as a full-time telecommunicator and Dalton Mabel as a full-time telecommunicator, both at the rate of $16.22 per hour, both effective June 27. Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following six full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $21 per hour, all effective June 27. And that is Bianca Corridor, Lee Marie Diaz, Jerome Edwards, Manuel Fernando Perez, Erin Urslander, Nell Ray Rivera, and then the following two as part-time correctional officers, both at the rate of $21 per hour, both also effective June 27. And that is Amanda Keen and Nicholas Trees. President Judge Tewok would like to hire Joseph Constel Kyle, probation aide, at a rate of $992.9 by weekly, effective June 20. Public Defender's Office would like to hire Mary Lee Reviz as a Secretary D slash interpreter at the rate of $958.77 by weekly, with $57.69 by weekly interpreter pay, effective June 20. Public Defender's Office would like to hire Christopher Rodomel as the Assistant Public Defender One Apprentice at the rate of $1,437.22 by weekly, effective June 20. The Sheriff's Office would like to rehire Ryan German as a full-time Deputy Sheriff at a rate of $1,171.40 by weekly, effective June 27. Treasurer's Office would like to hire Coro Conlon as an accounting clerk C at a rate of $1,244.79 by weekly, effective June 27.
Make a motion to approve these other transactions as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second, and we acknowledge the formidable amount of work that you folks have put into producing all of these changes and additions and so on. So thank you very much. You know, always light on your feet to adapt and try to accommodate, and we really appreciate that. Any questions for this motion? Not, if you're not in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of same signs, so move.
Moving on to salary board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt those transactions on the salary board?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve those salary board transactions. Any question or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of same signs, so move. Again, thank you. All right.
Good morning.
Hi, ladies.
Would you like to introduce yourselves? You may proceed as soon as you can.
Good morning. My name is Holly Lakey. I'm the Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Program.
And I'm Susan Douglas. I'm the Fiscal Director for MHIDEI as well as the Non-Happ Hall Program.
This morning, we have three items related to the options. I'll begin with fiscal year 2021, 2022, contract amendments. These are for our contracted providers for services and supports. Those are six contract amendments, two for early intervention, three for the Intellectual Disability Program, and one for mental health. The one for mental health is to add one more apartment to our New Start Apartments, which are permanent supportive housing units. We were very pleased to partner once again with the nonprofit Housing Development Corporation of Lebanon County's New Start Apartments. The total of those contract changes equals $146,208. This will be covered through our current, have a clear state and federal funds. So we are not seeking any additional county tax dollars to fund these expenditures.
Does there a motion? Bill, approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we approve those six contract amendments for fiscal year 2021 and 22. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of same signs, so move.
Yeah. The next item, our provider contracts for services and supports for the three programs, Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, and Early Intervention for fiscal year 2022, 2023. That would be 23 providers for mental health totaling $2,777,97. 36 providers for the Intellectual Disability Non-Waiver Program totaling $1,025,670. One provider for our Intellectual Disability Waiver Program totaling $20,500. 25 providers for the Early Intervention Program totaling $987,556. And then six providers for support services totaling $63,500. The grand total that we will be seeking approval for this morning would be $4,803,873. These would all be funded through our state and federal allocation. There is a 10% required county match for some of those services as well.
Make a motion to approve the MHIDEI provider contracts as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
And then lastly, is our Lebanon County MHIDEI 2022, 2023 budget overview. So we are seeking approval for the county support dollars that are budgeted. You did receive a budget overview that gives the difference between fiscal year 2021, 22 and our current, what we're asking for, 2022, 2023. You'll see that our total expenses are $7,276,308, with the revenues coming in at $7,58,017. The deficit for those is $218,291. And then the required 10% county match that I just spoke of is $317,875. So the total county funds budgeted, which would be the deficit amount of $218,291 plus the required 10% county match, is $536,166. You will note that that is quite a difference compared to 21, 22, where we were actually budgeting $1,042,000 at the deficit. So we're very pleased to present this budget this morning.
Would you be pleased to entertain a motion?
Please make that motion.
And I'll second. Thank you.
We have a motion in the second to approve the 2022, 23 budget, or at least this look at it. And any discussion regarding the motion in the first?
Just comment is, congrats for finishing up and finishing it the way he did. I know this is like finishing a half marathon for you guys. And it all is just in a motion for, you know, here, but it's a lot, a lot of work. So.
Thank you.
A lot of paper, too.
Thank you. It is a lot of paper, yes.
You're doing a shortage, right?
I appreciate the effort, love to make it happen.
Yes, Sue is working diligently. She is down on staff. So I really appreciate all the hard work that Sue does.
Sue is a workhorse. I mean, she's just amazing. Thank you. I hate to take any credit for it. No, you deserve a good training over the years. You know, it's been, it's been quite a journey.
Well, thank you for what you do.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
You too.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome. Thank you.
Reprisal. Revision.
Hot off the press.
I started revision. This is budget, this is what.
The papers work.
Well, the papers work. Well, it's working well.
All right, well, let's get started with introductions, Jim.
Good morning, John Shaw, Criminal Justice Advisory Board Planner with the Office of Probation Services.
Audrey Fortner, Director of Probation Services.
Right. Or if you want to proceed, you may do so.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Jamie, we're here today to request your authorization to prepare and submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission of Private Delinquency for federal funding to equip our adult and juvenile probation officers with body-worn cameras. We do believe that body-worn cameras are essential to time when the interaction between law enforcement and members of the public continues to follow a pretty heavy scrutiny. And there's no doubt that probation officers are law enforcement officers who can also find themselves in the same risky situation as the police. So recording officers encounters with offenders provides a layer of protection against charges of misconduct, but also holds the officer to a higher standard. And in the process, maintains, we believe, public confidence in the professionalism of the office. So the grant that we are working on would provide for 30 body-worn cameras and accessories, including docking stations, sidearm signal kits, licensing fees, warranty plans, replacement plans. There's also a training component. We would actually have someone from the vendor to come in and provide a training seminar on, please do actually work all this new equipment and to operate it. Like many of the grant applications we prepare, this does require a 50/50 federal-local match. With a cap of $2,000 in federal funding for each camera system, we think with the budget we have prepared, we fall within that framework. We are also confident that we can meet the 50/50 match, the local match, by using Act 35 supervision fees. So in other words, we would not require expenditures from the county general fund. This is a two-year grant that we made in October 1, 2022, and ends September 30, 2024. I think in my memo, I have 2023. That was a miscue I partly realized yesterday. It's actually, it's a two-year grant, but it ends September 30, 2024. But most of the hardware that we would purchase under this grant, if awarded, would actually come in the first year. And so the document that I just gave is a revised budget. It's actually, is increased from what I handed in the other day because we have added the signal sidearm kits to the proposal, which we think is very important as well. So the application deadline is July 6th, so that gives us time to continue to work on and find to the budget and other required sections of the application. So we're requesting your authorization to continue that work and submit a complete application to the commission by July 6th.
Right now, it's $107,703.
Right, with the 50/50 match. So we're actually requesting $53,851 in federal funding. And taking the 30 cameras, that does fall, you know, within that $2,000 threshold. Correct, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the 30 body cameras with 50% match coming from the Act 35 supervision.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And the only thing I'm going to add is that I always thought Ray Bender was the best candidate. He ever came out of any grant that came my way, and Jim, you arrived with him very nicely, yeah.
Well, I haven't been approved yet.
Well, we're going to, you'll get it, but I'm just saying.
Wow. Oh, we had to wow.
I'm just saying that's your diligence in pursuing these money just to protect the general funders.
Yeah, nice. I was just curious, did we have any body cameras worn by probation officers in the unit? So is this brand new for you?
This is brand new. In fact, it's kind of rare across the state at this point. I know of one manufacturer that we've spoken to, though, has been being a state poll. So I think it's a matter of time before it starts being implemented across the state.
So you're leaders in the state. Congratulations. I think it's well worth it. I'll make that motion.
Jamie, any questions?
I do have.
Oh, you already did that. All right.
First, I applaud you for this, you know, being on the safety committee and lost control. Peak work on everything. This is, this is a good move. I mean, it can, we've seen, I think, in current events, it can go both ways. But I think for the most part, it's accountability and it's, you know, ability to defend their actions and so on. The one thing that caught, just intrigued me, I guess, is the signal sidearm kit. So I'm imagining that is something that turns the camera on. So the sidearm is drawn, the camera's on.
Correct. So in those high-stress situations, if the officer would forget to initiate the start of recording, that will trigger it if the firearms hold.
Are there other devices that do that? Is it maybe getting out of the car do that? Or is there anything else other than the sidearm that's.
There are, there are car vehicle devices as well, but we do so much of our interaction inside homes. And I thought this would be a little bit more useful.
Yeah, you're not patrolling, so. And it's audible. You pick up the audio, too.
Anything else? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Of same signs, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Good luck with it, great.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Well, good morning, ladies. Welcome.
Welcome to our meeting. Would you like to introduce yourselves? As soon as you may proceed, whatever manner you'd like to.
Good morning. I'm Carol Davies. I'm the Administrator for the Area Agency on Aging.
I'm Anne Devine. I'm the Deputy Administrator at the Office of Aging. And I'm the Authority Client Officer.
So we're here today to review a few items with the county commissioners. The first is some contract amendments for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. That's the year that ends at June 30. We only have three amendments for the current fiscal year. They total $6,514. And of the three contracts, two of them allow us to hire staff on a temporary basis while we continue to try and fill all our vacancies through the state civil service process. We do have funds available within our budget to pay for these contracts. So we are not asking for any additional support from the county commissioners at this time.
And I'll make a motion to approve the provider contract for them as presented. And I'll make a motion to approve the provider contract for them since pre-serve.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve those three contract amendments. Any questions? I'm sorry that I didn't realize January was here. When we forget. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sides, salute.
Thank you. We also have our contracts for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. That's the fiscal year that begins on July 1st. We have 37 contracts listed for services valued at $1,177,277. Most of these contracts are carryovers of providers we have contracted with in the current year. In these contracts, for some of our service providers, we have requested an increase of 5.3% as a cost of living increase. We know that the Consumer Price Index is rising at a rate higher than that. We understand that the Department of Aging may or may not allow us a 4% increase. But we wanted to be cognizant of our funding restrictions. We wanted to be cognizant of the increases in expenses that providers are experiencing. So we came up with the 5.3% recommendation. We have had approval from the Department of Aging for this increase. And so that's what we added to these contracts for the new year. Many of our contracts are not capped because we have multiple providers who provide the same thing. So we just track internally to ensure that we don't go over our limits. In conjunction with the contracts, we always present our budget for the new fiscal year. And the budget shows revenues and expenses of $4,179,473. That's just a 1.8% increase over what our budget was for the current year, 2122 year. As far as the revenues, we did see a slight increase in our regular aging block grant. This is the second year of the adjustment that we're getting due to changes in the state's interstate funding formula, which recognizes changes in populations in the counties across the state. We also, as many people are experiencing, we no longer have access to our cares for the money that we had in the prior two years for the FFCRA money. But we do continue to have money from the Markham, which is also related to COVID.
On that state Markham?
No, it comes through the Department of Aging, but there's that.
Yeah, I see.
So with that, with these various funding sources, we are able to fund these contracts with the funding we have on hand and are not requesting additional funds from the County Commissioners for our budget that was coming this year.
Okay, motion.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve those 37 provider contracts. And I may miss this, but this is 2223?
Yes, I think I have typo on my.
That's what I'm referring to.
Yes, that one, I'm sure. Sorry.
Okay, it's 2223 provider contracts. Any questions regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sides, salute.
Thank you. The final item that we have today are some changes to our advisory council membership. That's on a separate, I didn't know, I don't know if you have that.
Yep.
Okay. So we have three-year terms for all our advisory council members. Some of the terms expire every year. Individuals may serve two, three-year, two, three-year terms. So some members have already served their two, three-year terms and must go off at any point.
Any interest in reading those names or?
I can, if you would like.
Okay, so recognize their voluntarism.
Okay, sure. We have three members who have served their two, three-year terms and are not eligible to be reappointed. That's Priscilla East, who is a retired person of the community. Erin Elias, who is a social worker at the VA. And Kimberly Norman, who was a foster stranger at Algean Village, but has since retired. We have one member who served a three-year term and is now willing to serve a second three-year term. And that's Kimberly Crider-Humble from Lebanon Family Health Services. We have one member who completed an unexpired term and is now willing to serve a full three-year term. And that's Teresa Sanaska. She's the Director of Resident Relations at Cedar Haven. Then we have three new appointees willing to serve a four-year term. One is Judy Disinger, who is a retired individual. One is Roger Peer, a social worker at the Lebanon family. And the other is John Cowley, Shared Rights Supervisor at Lebanon County. And I will note that John is not a resident of Lebanon County, but we do have a provision in our advisory council bylaws that allows for two members who are not residents of the county because they have some significant impact on these services for people in the county. And so he takes the second of those spots.
I'll make a motion to appoint those eight nominees for serving on your board.
Well, I think there are six. There are three that are not being read. Am I reading that correctly?
There's actually five people being reappointed in some, appointed or reappointed. And three people.
We're thanking for their services. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sides, salute. Thank you all very much. Good work. Sorry.
Have a great day, ladies. Thank you.
Sorry, I was, it's okay. I've been along in the relation. My, my first hour and a half is for equivalent to maybe.
Wait, that's my seat.
Sue can sit wherever she wants.
I can sit there.
You can sit wherever she wants.
Good morning. Good morning.
May I introduce yourself?
My name is Jim Donwire. I'm the Executive Director of Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse.
Who are you with today?
I'm with Sue Douglas. Sometimes I think Douglas is a fistwafers.
Nice to have you, Sue. All right, Jim, do you want to just proceed?
I am here today to present two separate situations. The first being contracts for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Before I proceed into talking about the contracts, I do need a signature from the commissioners. And I'll explain what this signature entails. This letter, I'm sending a letter to DDA, Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. This letter is informed that the Lebanon County Commissioners have authorized myself to execute all contracts on behalf of Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. The reason this needs to be signed, we're in a new grant agreement from 2020 to 2025. And apparently, this needs to be signed every new grant agreement. And when I get into the contracts, you understand why it's important for me to be able to execute them on your behalf and not continually come in here for amendments and so forth.
We used to have lots since this big full of contracts. Yeah.
You're actually a little, most have already been doing this. So DDA's catch up.
I'm the messenger. But so, yes. Okay.
Do you want to take a motion on that?
Just to make a motion to approve that authorization.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the authorization for signatures on those contracts as explained by the Director. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sides, salute.
Okay, thank you. The Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse presenting the 2022-2023 Contract Summary Sheet. I believe you have received a copy similar to this. I want to explain a few things on the, on these sheets. We have, our office has contracts with 37 providers total. Out of those 37 providers, there are 62 programs within those providers. Now, the providers cover the full continuum of care that we would need for somebody that comes to our office seeking funding for treatment. It has IOP, it has outpatient, it has partial, it has employee house rehabilitation, withdrawal management, rehabilitation with dual diagnosis involved. So we have the continuum covered with the contracts that we currently hold. As you see on your sheet, hopefully, the yellow, everything that's highlighted yellow on the sheet means that the rates are finalized and they're on the pack the website. Just to let you know, every county SCA is responsible for obtaining the contracts for your in-county providers. So that would be New Perspectives, their inpatient, their detox, and their co-occurring programs. So I'm responsible for making sure three of those programs get listed on the packet. Other counties are responsible for listing the programs that are in their county. So when you see blue, that tells you, tells me that some counties have not entered all the rates on the packet website. So for instance, on the first page, Lancaster County Blueprints for Addiction Recovery, we are waiting on all those rates. And if you go through, most of the rates are here, most of it's yellow, but there are some blue throughout the handout. I just wanted to point that out to you that it's not a lack of us not having the rates. We can't get them until they finalize them and put them on the packet. That's the other reason that it's important that you sign that agreement. So when those rates do come in, like I got a letter somewhere. I got a letter today, one of the providers finally put the rates on the website. So then I'll go in here and I'll change those three rates so they're, they're active and up to date. So as we get those, this will change. And with that agreement, I don't have to come in here every time I get a letter and I start changing the rates on the sheet. The last thing I'd like to point out as far as the contracts, if you go all the way back to the second last page, I spoke about the contracts and the rates that we have to set here for Lebanon County that we're responsible for. Just to give you some example, rate setting occurs in April, May. Rate setting involves not only myself, but it also involves Dolphin County SCA, Laxer County, Harry Cumberland, and Lebanon, of course. We're a five-county collaborative. We get together, we set the rates for our five counties. Basically, what happened in rate setting this year, providers came in with very, very high requests for rate increases. So just for example, New Perspectives out here, our campus, last year their adult detox was 249. This year, the rate's going to be 276, which is a 10.8% increase in the rate. That's per day. They, they asked for 37%. So we negotiated it down to 10%. Their adult rehab was 210 last year. This year will be 233 for an 11% increase. They asked for 19%. And then you'll see adult co-occurring was 230. It's going to be 255, which is a 10.9% increase. They asked for 21%. Some of the providers asked for 40% and above. So we, we try to do our best to, you know, we don't want to see providers go out of business. We don't. But there is a point where we have to stick to what we in the forward budget was. Just to give you some idea, the Lebanon County programs, the three that I just mentioned, they are on the low side of per diens, per day for the similar programs in other counties. So we're on the low end yet, believe it or not. And also, I want to bring up the fact that in Lebanon County for outpatient rates, we increased their outpatient rates by 3% across the board. So every outpatient provider includes methadone, we'll get a 3% increase on the rates. Again, Lebanon County rates are still the lowest for outpatient, outpatient group, outpatient individual, methadone. So our rates are low and we're steadily catching up to other counties. You know, we want to, we want to be physically sound, but we also want to be appropriate with everybody else's setting our rates at, especially in region F, which is the live admission. So those are contracts, 2022, 2023.
Second. It's motion on the floor to approve the 2022 and 2023 contracts. And any discussion?
I've noticed that many of the double-digit increases to these are either in detox or rehab. And I suspect that has to do with probably the same workforce struggles that healthcare facilities are facing. Detoxes, you know, takes a certain medical component.
I think across the state, they're struggling with retention of staff. The biggest complaint I hear is nursing, availability to keep people. Sure medication that they use when they detox someone has gone up as well. So there, there's a variety of reasons, but I believe it's the retention of employees and hiring people and keeping people.
And one of the reasons that their, their rates, they wanted 40%, they gave us a budget that had six vacancies in it. So that's why we said, well, we'll do 11%. You know, if you can prove to us that you can actually hire these people, you know, we can, we can look at it again next year. But, but that's why we didn't go with those higher rates pretty much across the whole region.
Thank you for being shrewd and conservative with our dollars.
Well, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that they can make it appear that they need a 40% increase. They have to submit an XYZ packet, and we go over the XYZ packet. And if the math is correct, it can come up to the percentages we came up with. Like Sue said, very easy to show, you know, our expenses are really high, but in reality, they're not because there's six positions that are open at $150,000, $200,000 that aren't filled. So it, it's kind of a back and forth. We do, we do as a region, I have some very seasoned SCA directors with me in that crew, and they've been through it 25, 30-plus years. They, they know their tricks. They know what to look for. Oh, this doesn't look right.
Let me raise. Rick, Jack Carroll.
Yep.
Show your diligence and, you know, give your work. David, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sides, salute.
Okay. The second thing I'd like to present, it's a one-page handout. It is the budget summary, budget summary from 2021, 2022, as well as the proposed 2022-23 budget. I would start at the top with the expenditures. The first major expenditure that our office has is administration. As you can see, the difference from last year to the new year will be very similar. We also have the expense of our prevention department. Again, our prevention budget from last year compared to the new year is relatively the same. It's about a $6,000 difference. The next item that we spend money on expenditure would be intervention services. Now, if you notice, in 2021, 2022, we budgeted $166,000 for intervention services. And this coming year, we're going to have to budget $215,000, which is about a 30% increase in that budget item. This increase is due to the increasing cost of crisis intervention. We were paying $103,000 last year for services. And this year, we'll be paying $144,000. Treatment, the treatment, total treatment expenditures are about the same. Case management, case management went up about 17%. That's the case management unit that we fund through PCS. And that basically went up because of salary increases and retention of staff efforts on their part. We also have an expensive certified recovery specialist also with the PCS unit. That is actually going down 20%. So our total expenditures for the year will be $2.255,010 million, which is a slight increase. It's about 3.79% increase with a total value of increase of $82,000. The revenues, things I want to point out for the revenues, through DDA, we are getting a total of $1.6 million roughly, which is an increase. We are getting more COVID funds and source funds. We're getting 1.3%. We are getting more COVID funds and source funds, we're getting one-point-three million for those two categories, which is up from the previous year. Our block grant stays the same for flat funding. We're still getting the two-thousand, two-hundred ninety-one thousand dollars for, from the Department of Welfare for our block grant. And then the county rental fund is the same as the one before. So that comes out to two-point-two-five-five-zero-one-zero revenue. So our budget, again, some things have gone up, some things have gone down. The things that have gone up, we're covering with more money from DDA and other places that we're getting from the federal state. Again, we're not here today to ask for any county funding whatsoever. And we do realize that the rental is for all intents purposes, the county funding part.
And that's actually a hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, and she told me to make sure, you're aware of this, in previous years, we had to dip into the rental fund to cover the budget. This year, we don't expect to do that. That's why the total was one-sixty-three instead of one-ninety-two.
Yeah, they came out with this COVID supplemental funding for the case management and the certified recovery specialist programs. And we should have some carryover from that, that's going to carry over into next year. But we can ask for more if we need it.
It's a good question, does there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the two million, two-hundred fifty-five thousand dollar and five thousand and ten dollars, sorry, budget as presented. Don't want to forget that ten dollars.
One, it's been moved in second that we approved the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the drug and alcohol next year. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sides, so move.
Another thing, you have a five-year comparison, I don't know if you want to look at five years and look at it.
That's really helpful.
Gives you some idea, I mean, I don't know, proud of the fact, I guess, I am proud of the fact, when I started eight years ago, we had a one-point-one million dollar budget. So we doubled our budget in eight years and no extra costs at the time. It's all federal state, you know, if there's something out there that we can go and get, like a grant proposal or, you know, some kind of initiative that they're putting out there, for us, we're going to do it.
Yeah, the state opioid response, the SOAR money has been out there for several years. And they are really trying, they're trying to get it spent. So, so if we need more, they're always telling us, just, you know, tell us what you need, and we'll, we'll see if we can make it happen. And they've been very good about that in the last couple of years.
I don't know, I think John has another ride, but Sue is really going after that one too.
My question is, not related necessarily to this, but the, it's often up that the prison for you to go back in.
We're, we're back in, I think. And, and that brings me to a point too, I just wanted to make you guys aware that we no longer fund the videtrol program at the prison. We funded that for two years due to the fact that the county prison applied for a grant, they didn't get it two years ago. So I said that I wouldn't fund it until, well, until it's here. They actually reapplied for a grant, got it. So they're funding their own videtrol program. We're still involved, but it's not coming from our office. Freeze up money, like we talked about, to move money around in areas that we actually need.
Very good.
Oh, no, Sue, she did a summary, you have a summary in front of it, kind of what I went over in the budget.
Anything else? All in.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you send me that song, she?
Yeah, don't mess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dan Seaman is following up on the workshop yesterday.
Is this for the camera?
Yeah. Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, Dana.
We attempted to cover it yesterday. It's something probably depends on gee, productivity, but answer follow-up on that.
Please introduce yourself, and you may listen. Daniel Seaman, and I'm with the Lebanon County Assessment Office. Just here to touch base with you about an amendment to a contract with EST, who provides our computer a aided mass appraisal system in the county. They, as you know, earlier this year, they merged with Vision Government Solutions, so they are a division of that now. So Vision would like to have an amendment to that contract, contract to provide an upgrade to our system, which we were in the process of doing for the existing CAMA system. It will be at no extra cost to the county, but it will provide us with more functionality, a lot, a lot more user-friendly, a little bit more security. And the existing system that we have now eventually will be retired because Vision is taking over that part of what EST did. So they'll provide that to all the clients here in the state with that amendment. They'll continue to, the, the new, the new system will continue to value properties as, as been done since the reassessment back in two thousand fourteen. So there'll be no, no problem there. Like I said, it's no original cost, they're going to honor the amount that was in the original contract. It's a new system. And then they'll continue to provide maintenance and support from that, so. Motion.
Motion approved.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this request. And any discussion, any clarification? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sides, so move. Thank you for your presentation yesterday, it was very helpful. Thank you.
All right. Now, I have three items. First two related to the community action partnership. This is an annual item of participation in the Medical Assistance Transportation Program Grant. It's an entitlement grant, so essentially that means that whatever the demand is, the state will fund. So we need your approval on that grant agreement and assurance of compliance, which spells out reporting requirements and notifications of special circumstances and things throughout the course of the, of the fiscal year.
Make a motion to approve these providers of medical assistance transportation.
It's been moved in second. This is the grant.
It's a grant agreement, we'll talk to the drivers next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So amended to, this would be the grant. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sides, so move.
Okay, then related to that, you have before you a list of Medical Assistance Transportation Program contracts for twenty-three private drivers to provide the service to and from medical appointments for those eligible for the transportation program. There are established rates, which are also attached for those trips, depending on distance, the county they may be going to, whether it's one-way, in some cases, if it's a, for example, there's a sleep study, which would be one-way, one day, return the next. And also Philadelphia, Wilmington, those types of long-distance trips, visiting visits, those are all attached to it. I would ask your approval on those driver contracts for those twenty-three.
So I can go through.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve these drivers. Any questions or comments, I have just stopped, you said Wilmington and Philly, but you didn't mention Dixon City.
Yeah.
Southside.
Yeah, and there's a whole lot. Still there?
Still there.
That's suburb. No, no disrespect, just for you.
Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sides, so move.
All right, and then lastly, I have five requests for exemption from real estate tax credit for eligible disabled veterans or their spouses, and those are Charles Vlasic Jr. of Oak Street, Lebanon, Curtis Hamilton of Briar Rose Avenue, Lebanon, Daniel Baker of Anthracite Road, Cornwall, Lorraine Brandt of Bethany Road, Lewinstown, and Andrew Rydel of South Penn Street, Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the five exemption requests for real estate tax exemption by these one-hundred percent percent.
Second. It's been moved in second, if any questions regarding those exemptions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sides, so move.
Oh, I was going to say, you said that was the last thing, but is the.
Oh, that, yeah, you have.
For the NPO?
You have a request, no, you have a liquid fuel special request in from the city of Lebanon for some signalization, but John Fitzkey's setting up a workshop with the city to discuss that.
Oh.
With you to present what their, what the project is. We don't have too many of those, so I think it's worthy of.
So this one's on hold.
Discussion, yeah, we'll do a workshop. Probably the one-eigh, nine, that's probably likely, but same line.
All right.
And you have NPO Policy Board coming up at eleven-thirty via Zoom. You have Assessment Appeals this afternoon. I don't know how many you have left, we have, you have seven? Jim, if I could, I have an answer to your question from earlier about the ARPA.
One-two, unless you have close like that.
Two-hundred and eighty-four today were approved, there are still potentially another ninety-four that are in the Teamsters bargaining unit. So those may be addressed to the future.
Depending on what the agreement is with Teamsters, that two-point-one million figure is most likely going to go up.
Yeah. Yeah, somewhat. Six-hundred thousand, something like that.
Two-seven. Anything else from the floor? Not, we're going to move to adjourn.